...States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please shine your grace upon us. Help us to make good and wise decisions. Help to keep our meetings peaceful and cordial, and please protect us as we all travel home. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right. Welcome everybody here to the Welsh County Council regular meeting, Tuesday, October 8th, 2019. First thing we have here on the agenda is the minutes from our September 3rd meeting. Assume everybody received them electronically?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, additions, attractions from the minutes? Yes, if not, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
To move.
Second. We have a second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Pose, motion carries. All right. Next thing we have here are transfers. There's quite a few of them. We're getting to the end of the year, starting to get into the end of the year here, so we're getting, starting to get our ducks in a row here. The only one that I had, and I'd spoken to Blake about it, was in regards to the capital, the $120,000 in the capital lit economic development funds coming from bridges. I was a little concerned with that, just wanted to make sure that we didn't, you know, we're making sure that bridge money's always accessible, and just wanted to make sure there was, and I guess it was an over, is that right Blake? There was an over cost in the Plaza project for the $120,000 on it. Did anybody else have any concerns in that?
I, I have one just for the other Blake. Field equipment, $4,500.
That's, that's, that's on additional. We're doing transfers right now. Yeah, I'm sorry, we're just doing transfers here. Just so everybody knows, transfers, we have, because there's quite a few of them, we have one coming from the sheriff, for $9,654, survey for $400, county election board, $250, county commissioners, we have $35,005. I'm just giving you the totals of these, where it's coming from, and they're being shifted around to different line items to balance everything out. Superior court, we have $400, circuit court, we got a total of $3,394.45. The jail, $63,714. And then on the lit economic development, we have, again, from bridges, $120,000 being moved over to capital development, which was the overrun on the Plaza there from the original access. And again, my concern was, and Blake and I talked about, we want to make sure that that money for bridges is available, because that's what it's earmarked for, and if there were to be any, you know, if we go forward here and pass this, then there is money in the account, so it just has to come back as an additional appropriation to us if there was needs for bridge monies. So, does that make sense to everybody? It's not depleting, there's still money, it just has to be, has to come through an additional appropriation.
I will say that, and I think others here can comment, that the Plaza project, as it unfolded and as it moved along, we can all say that we each had an opinion on it and how it went together, and the outcome, obviously, is what the objective was, and certainly the pricing to get there was varied in fine fashion, but I think in general, I think we can all say that it's a relatively good spend in this situation, since the monies that were allocated didn't quite meet the need for us to finish it, and I think probably was kind of what we had in mind originally anyway.
Don't you think so, Jeff?
So, as I said, at this point, it seems like we need to wrap it up and get that done.
Any other comments?
You guys seen all the bills?
We did, exactly. Absolutely.
And it is getting ready to be, is it getting ready to be filed out, Blake, as far as the project?
We have a little bit of concrete work on it, a portion probably within two weeks, and electric vehicles should be done by April.
Okay. But as far as cost-wise, everything looks pretty good going forward here?
Yeah, yes. I mean, it might be within five or 10 grand, you know?
Sure, sure.
Pretty close to that. We'll see. Anything new?
Okay. Any other questions on any of the other?
Blake, I heard a comment on the being, the entrance getting in, is there trouble with doors there getting into the entrance?
There is, I would like to discuss that in private.
Okay, all right. Somebody hit me up, and I just thought I'd...
Yeah, sure, give me a call.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on the transfers as presented? We have a motion to approve the transfers as presented? So, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Pose, motion carries. All right. Next one here then is the additional, which we have community correction project income, and drug-free community, and vehicle inspection. Does any council members have any questions in regards to these additional appropriations?
$4,500.
That should have been steel equipment piled, that's for transferring and removing equipment from the vehicle for trading in, and putting radios and stuff in the vehicle for getting...
So that's physically labor?
Yeah, physical labor, to get that done, and then updating the equipment that is needing to be updated where it's at.
And just to let everybody know, this community correction project income is coming, coming from community correction project income, not from general funds, so just to make sure you know where the accounts are coming from. Have a question, Mike?
I, I was just gonna ask a question, I mean, it may not be the right place for that. I was just curious, how many vehicles do you have that you're changing radios and things from? I didn't know if that was where, do you do it where the sheriff does the same work, and if there's some bulk rate, or some of that similar work that's done, if there was a better pricing?
I believe we're using the same installers that Scott's using. We're going, we're getting rid of three, and only bringing two on, so we've got some extra costs we need to step out of, and we're taking that as well. We've got one that's 2001 and 2004, and 2007, the floor's got just under 300,000 miles. So it's becoming very problematic.
Sure. Any other further questions for Blake? And just to let everybody know, here on the CADA, I see ladies are here for it, this is your second, we did one earlier, I believe, and this is the second request then.
This is just the remaining funds that we are, we reopened the grant a lot because we didn't have requests earlier this year, so just bringing them over.
Okay. And then vehicle inspections coming from, for the sheriff in regards to then inspections that they have, and they have a fund, and it needs to be appropriated, so I just wanted to summarize this. Any other questions, concerns here on additional appropriations? If not, do we have a motion to accept all three additional appropriations as presented?
To move.
And motion? We have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Pose, motion carries. Next thing is our public hearing for a public comment time. This is in regards to Resolution 2019-09. This was the ERA that we approved and moved forward at our last meeting. At this time, would there be anybody that would like to have any comments or anything in regards to the ERA? This is the countywide economic revitalization area that we're creating. Going once, going twice? I guess with no, any public concerns? With that being said, we probably still ought to go ahead and have a motion to approve this, even though we did back then to move it forward, if we'd like to have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the economic revitalization area.
Yeah, Resolution 2019-09.
I'll gladly second that.
We have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by raising your hand. Pose, motion carries, 701M. All right. Okay. All right. I guess we have appointments? If, Scott? Let's see if we... It's, it's coming up, yeah, come up, yeah, we're in our line, yeah. We have to go through this one first, let me do this first, then...
Evening.
Evening. Make this short and brief, but as of about 15 minutes ago, we're sitting at about 100
inmates total, 33 pretrial in Superior, 21 pretrial in Circuit, 15 F6, and 10 DOC. So DOC usually around that number, they should be coming to pick up some here pretty soon, so we'll get rid of some of those that have been sentenced, DOC, and get those numbers back down with them. We were up to about 109 towards the end of last week. There was a lot of arrests in the last two weeks, kind of jumped those numbers up there. A week ago, two weeks ago, Monday, we had our jail inspection, the state that was scheduled, so that went very well. I've already seen the pre-report on that, and that'll be coming your guys' way very shortly. Jail commander will be sending that out to everybody for their review, but no issues at all through the jail inspection, everything went fine, so.
Good.
Also, Friday, last Friday, the both judges, myself, the prosecutor, and chief probation officer attended a pretrial summit down at the state they put on. You've probably been hearing some of this talk about criminal rule 26, it's coming around the bend for next year, that they want all agencies to be in place to have some type of pretrial assessment that is performed for people that are arrested. And so we have been having meetings about that, how we want to implement that, and all 92 counties were represented down there, there's about 900,000 people that went to that on Friday, so we went down, there was, I think there's 10 pilot counties that have been doing it for the last year or so, so it was a kind of a best practice type thing, and it kind of just reassured us what we were thinking to put in place here for our pretrial assessments was kind of right in line with what best practices were, so that's something that will, I don't think will have a huge impact on our number, I think it will help some, to help assess risk on people when they come out, instead of doing typical bond schedule, to where you commit this crime, you follow a schedule, and this is what you pay to get out. So, obviously, they're innocent until proven guilty, so the pretrial risk assessment uses a standard form to where they'll assess their risk, if they're low risk, then they may have the ability to be released pending their court date and those type of things, instead of tying up bets in the jail and those type of things, so hopefully there will be a good impact for us in that, but just kind of throwing that out there, we attended that, and I think we got another meeting coming up here soon that the judges are going to put in place, and we'll try to make some progress from there before cheers of the year.
What kind of, what's the definition of risk that you guys are looking at?
Well, most states, or well, most counties are using, it's called IRAS, don't ask me what it stands for, but it's a risk assessment, to where they'll consider a lot of things, you know, had they had any failure to peers for prior court hearings, do they have a job, do they have a family, you know, the type of things that would establish, and I think there's, what they've narrowed down on IRAS is seven questions, I believe, to where they go through. So there's a lot of prior criminal history, depending on the type of crime that they've had, those kinds of things that will establish whether or not they failed to appear in the past or court hearings, and those type of things, so.
So you just check boxes, and then they determine where they feel like?
Yeah. So, and we wouldn't do that, the judges have been talking, some counties use community corrections, some, it sounds like the majority use probation to do that risk assessment, and then some counties, the pretrial risk officer, so to speak, can make that determination, if they're low risk, they can release, but if it's moderate, then it goes before a judge, and the judge can make that decision at an initial hearing to release on no bond, and then obviously if they're high risk, they don't qualify, they would stay in jail, so they pose an potential, potential risk to the community itself.
Sure.
And that's about it. Things have been busy, like I said, it seemed like the two weeks after street fair was our busiest weeks. Street fair was kind of mild compared to the last two weeks, so.
Street fair hangover.
Yeah, some kind of hangover, I think, I don't know what the deal is, but yeah, other than that, the financials are reported there. Again, it's kind of hard, since they prepaid the, the F6 fees for inmate per diem, it's kind of hard to, to show that we've, at this point, last year, at, to where we're in line, we're a little bit off, but that kind of got thrown away off at inmate per diem that was already paid back in July, so. Other than that, we have, our new deputy came back from the academy, and he is about a week away from being on his own, so we have one out on medical leave, and we still have one spot open at this point, but we're in the works of getting that filled here in the next couple of weeks, so.
Okay.
If there's any questions?
Congratulations on a clean report.
Thank you.
Like here?
Thank you.
All right, next we have Park Center Mental Health, Paul Wilson. Welcome. I assume you're Paul, right?
I am.
Okay.
This is Chelsea Craig.
Nice to meet you.
Hi.
I know last year you come to our meeting, I think Chuck had communicated to you, and we really appreciate that, and we like the, we like this format, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Come and talk to us here.
So, I want to do, first of all, I want to thank you for coming to the council, and you all, like I know that you all are subsidizing our effort about $190,000, and we appreciate that. We want to tell you what we're doing with that money, and give you some overview of sort of programming, and maybe a little bit more financial information to go ahead. So, and again, this is Chelsea, Chelsea is our clinical coordinator, getting, having three meetings tonight, good to be here, so the two of us are here tonight. So, the first page, as you open up the pie graph, I want to show you just essentially the kind of pay sources that people have. As you see in looking at that, about 7% of people had, have, is that burning on?
This is the page we didn't really see, because most of them are just passing around.
Yes, yes, thanks, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I added, sometimes it was about whether to connect that, but I wanted to sort of disconnect, so you could actually see it more. So, the, on the second page, the pie graph, that shows you essentially the pay sources in people that come for services, and a lot of the people that come for services are people that are having some significant challenges, and many of them are unemployed in a variety of different reasons. So, if you look at the private insurance, the green section, that's about 7%, about 6% of people have no pay source at all, and that's essentially where the monies that you all give us primarily support. And then if you look at the bottom of that page, you can see that, we have about $740,000 of contractual write-offs. We have a charge, we do, we don't collect what we charge, and that's, that's like most medical facilities, and then we have about $118,000 where essentially we, we gave away On the, the next page, on page three, I just want to talk a little bit about some of our activities, and in the last year, since we met last, we have expanded our, our sort of capability to see people in emergent bases. I think you all recognize that if you have family members, or you know somebody that's been in significant emotional pain, when you're, when you're in pain, you want some help now and not, not down the road. In our field, there's such a scarcity of psychiatrists and therapists, and the need is, is growing. So we put together a walking clinic, that is not in Bluffton, but people from Bluffton come and use that walking clinic, it's staffed seven days a week, so on the weekends, we have psychiatrists that people can just walk in and see, and therapists that people can walk in and see. It's been a significant expansion of services, it is near our hospital in Fort Wayne, but that, that's been a significant resource. We have, our medical director actually operates out of that facility, we have three different prescribers, our medical director and two other prescribers that operate out of there. Probably the other thing, just from an overall center point of view, we've expanded a lot of work in response to the opioid crisis, we are doing residential services in Allen County, people from Wells County come up to that service for care, it is about a three week program, and then come back to Wells County for ongoing outpatient care. Those are some expansions we've done specifically in Allen County, the community outreach activities here in Wells County, I think some of those are listed. I think the, the thing that we probably also have that are coming up is, now toward the bottom of page three, we've expanded our IOP, that stands for intensive outpatient services, so we've expanded that for people with addictions primarily. Our medication assisted treatment is, has been sort of doing a bit of that, but now we're going to significantly expand that here in Wells County. Let me just say a little bit about that. For people that have, primarily for people that have opioid use disorder, whether it's heroin, or oxycontin, or a variety of those kinds of things, the chances of them recovering and being able to not use is much better now if they have a medication. There's three different strategies that is used for medication. One is methadone, which is essentially a daily kind of pill to, daily dose to replace the, the opioid. There's two methadone clinics in, in Fort Wayne, we do not run either one of those, we, our strategy is to use a drug called either Suboxone or Vivitrol, and typically, particularly when dealing with heart systems, we use more Vivitrol with big bets, there are no opioids within that medication, and that's a medication essentially that makes it less likely, people don't enjoy opioids they take, so it helps them stay away from, you know, doing sort of things with the craving kind of thing. That's a monthly injection, Vivitrol, there's also a daily pill, but for the most part, we use a monthly injection to help people in those moments when they're trying to make a choice about whether they're going to use or not. So, that's, that's a service that's expanding here in, in Bluffton, and that's coming up yet this fall, so we intend to have a more robust effort down this way. Getting people, it's actually more difficult to get the licensure to treat an opioid use disorder than it is to prescribe an opioid, it's the weirdest thing in the world, any doctor can just prescribe opioids pretty easily, but to treat opioid, you have to go through a significant training process, and our, our staff have gone through that process, and we now have two board certified addictionologists, and we then have a number of different doctors and APMs that are, will be involved in that process, so that's...
Want to say on this medication, are they on it for life, or for how long usually?
It's a great question. It depends, everything depends.
Sure, yeah.
So, for people, if you were a heroin addict for 30 years, there's a real argument that you get on methadone and you just stay on it the rest of your life. It's essentially a harm reduction strategy, and there are people literally that drive an hour every day to the methadone clinic, if they're 5:30 in the morning, they take those methadones, go to work, raise their family, they do pretty well, and, but they have to do that seven days.
Every day.
Yeah, and for people that are really long-term heroin users, that is, there's a real argument to do that, because opioids change your brainwear, and, and you literally, you don't feel pleasure, you feel sort of this depression if you don't, with the brain rewiring, and, and so the chances of staying sober and having, being a functioning taxpayer, a good parent, are better for people that actually are on that method. That is for a long trip, and people who have been addicted a long time. For most people, you'd use Suboxone, which has a bit of an opioid in it, but it's also got other medications in it, usually you stabilize people on that Suboxone, and they might stay on that anywhere from six months to two years, depending upon, you sort of look at how the rest of their life is going, the rest of their fam, if they got a job, if their family's going well, if their life's going well, at that point in time, you taper them off, but what you don't do is take, don't take them off the medications until their life's somewhere in order, because certain people, they risk a little bit of stress. The Vivitrol, it would be the kind of thing that people in life that go on that for two to three years, or something like that, so they're not, they're not particularly short-term medications, because in life they know that for somebody that's been using, what they really need is clean time, and anything we can do to sort of tip that balance to help them stay sober for...
Higher success rate?
Yeah, much higher success rate, if longer we can do than... So, those decisions are always, yeah, they're always jointly made with the psychiatrist or prescriber, based on the conditions or what's going on.
Paul, I was curious, do the chronic pain people, there's a crowd out here that has chronic pain?
Yes.
You can't really take them off of these products, is there an alternate product that you're suggesting instead of an opioid, or are they just on it for life? People with mesh, certain back trouble?
Yeah, it's a great question.
They're not an addict, they're assigned or prescribed it, is that really a good course, or those drugs should be canceled completely?
It's, it is a great question. The weird thing about opioids, though, is if you're on a long-term maintenance dose of opioids, for instance, with the pain, because most, you know, as you, new opioid users, new people who are addicts, a high percentage of them are, are people who are given an opioid as a part of treatment, you know, by a doctor. You know, a friend whose son was a great soccer player, and tore his ACL, and they played him on opioids, and then he ended up in prison because he couldn't stop that thing, so those kind of stories are not even frequent stories. Now, what's happened with the medical community is they're getting much more cautious, much more careful about the length of script, kind of scripts, and the other thing about opioids is, after some period of time, they really don't work all that well, and you actually get, you get more reactive to pain, so it's weird, you depend upon it, you take it for pain, but the opioid itself makes you more reactive to pain than you would have been before you had it. So, there are some, there's some good strategies, there's no perfect answer, but I, I think for somebody that is on long-term oxycontin or something like that, my advice is they really ought to see a pain specialist. Those pain specialists do some really interesting strategies, so instead of taking an oral oxycontin every day, sometimes they put a little tiny pump at the spot of like a nerve damage, so you just put a little tiny bit of opioid right at the damage, instead of flooding the whole body with opioids kind of stuff. So there's some very clever things people can do for pain, actually things like yoga, meditation, other kinds of things help with pain too. Not an easy answer, but I think the medical community has done a really good job of not addicting, because really the medical community, people really, they'll follow their own, I mean, if you've followed any of the national lawsuits, Sackler family, and Perry Farming, those kind of people, just really gave out misleading information purposely to basically tell docs that this is not addictive, and that was absolutely wrong, and faults, and that's why they're bankrupt now, and they're in suit for a long period. I don't know if Wells County is involved in any of those suits, there are suits, many counties and cities are suing those, Perry Farming and other people, to get some of the money back to use for treatment, but... Thank you. Yeah. So that's, that's an expansion of some stuff that's going on down here. On page four, it describes a little bit of the kind of addiction services we do, a lot of it has to do with cognitive CDT, or cognitive behavioral therapy, which is sort of a treatment of choice, and again, Deb Baker is, is starting that, and we're expanding that down here. Trying to, maybe sticking to page five, talks about some of the diagnosis rates, the treatment, and some of the diagnoses, the results on the page. What you see here, though, I think, just for your awareness, is that lots of people have depression. I mean, at any point in time, the essence of it, 10% of our population is clinically depressed at any given moment, a likely number, about the same number of people having criteria for anxiety disorder at any minute. Sometime in your... Sometime in your life, lifetime prevalence, about twenty percent of the people who get anxiety or depression kind of stuff, very common. And those are the types of diagnoses that we would see most commonly. However, the probably most devastating kind of illnesses are schizophrenia and bipolar disorder, and those kinds of things where it's, people, their brain is broken, they can't really make good choices. If we can keep them on medications and we can keep them in support, kind of sort of wraparound services, generally can do pretty well. I think many of you know we have an apartment building south of our building on Main Street.
Actually, the same street.
Okay.
State and Wayne, I do believe, but...
Is that it? Thank you, thank you. So we have an apartment building out there with individuals who really have more significant challenges, and that we have staff in that building each day to support them and stabilize. And it's really working very, very well. So that, we built that as a HUD housing project kind of stuff, and that's worked very well. The people in that location would obviously have more significant challenges than just a minor depression, just a depression or something like that. So we're going to separate the stuff to talk about now a little bit, and then I'll let go through the ground well, and then I'll shut up and let you hear your questions. So fiscal impact for Wells County, and this looks different than last year. You may remember when we came last year, that Park Center had a fairly significant, Park Center, Allen County, had a fairly significant subsidy of what we're doing down here, but part of that has to do with when the funds actually come in. So let me just walk through this a little bit. Our total expenses for our office here is about one point four million dollars. What we've collected this year is about one point three, however, significant amount of that was actually a rollover from previous years, that the managed care companies weren't paying us on time, so this is what we collected this year. In terms of what we earned, it would have been more in the area of one point one, one point two, something like that. You all supported us, a hundred and ninety-two thousand, and again, thank you for that. This year with that collection, there really wasn't a subsidy on the general park center funds for our Bluffton office. Again, our last year subsidy was around two hundred and fifty thousand. And then what we paid wages and benefits to people that work down here is just under a million dollars. So I think that's, that's essentially a financial overview. This year, we're also, CFO tells me this little asterisk at the bottom, we're going to do a significant reinvest in terms of permitting, doing some more renovations that are going to be a little later issue. Questions? And again, if there are significant clinical questions, I'm going to have to pull this away, because Chelsea would be the one. Three questions for you, Chelsea, right?
I'd like to point out, if I'm reading this right, you're doing somewhere between like nine hundred people in service here in Wells County. That's close to be incorrect?
Yes.
I had the number one thousand from last year, but it's probably that, pretty close to in that one thousand to nine hundred range, is it?
Yes. And what this doesn't include, and didn't think it really made a difference, is those offices that, people that live here get services in Allen County, but that's not reflected at all, because that's our more intense services are in Allen County, so obviously people come up with outpatient care or come up with residential care in Wells County.
You said there's lots of them in that person?
There are not many. I don't, I don't know exactly, I know, for instance, if somebody needs to be hospitalized, they come up and say, oh, we need to be hospitalized there. And again, that, that's a pretty common thing.
Sure, absolutely.
He would, he would be the person that would often make the arrangements, so he could, yeah, there's obviously a lot of voluntary hospitalizations too, but there are some times that your C I T officers in this county bring people up to Allen County for inpatient care.
The services you guys provide, so thank you for doing it.
Sure. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you coming to explain it too, that helps us a lot. Sometimes we see the stuff behind the scenes, we don't know what it means, so.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good week.
All right. Next we have is Chad, the economic revitalization area in S B one with Chad Klein. I guess Roy, have Maul, say, yeah, come on up.
I'd say the economic revitalization area, if you guys want to have to put that out of public hearing, so that portion should already be taken care of.
Yeah, well, we did, yeah, we did for the, for the blanket, yeah, E R A, yeah. And now we're to the, yeah.
Yeah, so now we should just be so...
It's a little confusing, all this paperwork was coming out here.
Yeah, so now is the process, so we couldn't obviously come forth with the request for the tax abatement until we provided the avenue and the ability for that tax abatement, which is why the E R A needed to come first.
And that's what we have here in the county resolution, with your name, yeah, with Hartland or...
Correct.
But we didn't pass this one, we passed the blanket.
We didn't give that one a number yet.
Yeah, this is a new one.
Hartland is responsible for the request for the E R A designation, where I still pulled it out of the air, so they're the ones that asked.
But this is a, this is a blanket, though, for any company coming, right?
It's just to declare any economic revitalization area.
We just did, yeah, yeah.
Which you guys did after your public hearing.
Yes, yes, we did, we did that motion, so we're good there. Now we're here to, for Hartland.
Now we're here specifically for the request for tax payment.
Similar where you were with Haven Manufacturing, because that had already been declared an E R A before, so you didn't have to go through the steps with their tax payment.
Yeah, so essentially, we're here for the request, which kind of started the original conversation, was the request for tax payment for Hartland R M C's investment in fiber technology throughout a good portion of Wells County. I did share with you guys the map of their coverage area, which is pretty much in the beige, that you'll see there's a pretty good area of Wells County that is going to be covered with broadband. I came across a quote online as I was kind of doing some research, that I thought was kind of interesting, and it kind of makes sense, so I'll kind of talk a little bit further, is a quote said, "Businesses bring jobs, high-quality internet brings the business." We work with another company here locally on a tax abatement, and as I was talking with the gentleman, he works for Baden Engage in Fort Wayne, and he indicated to me he was coming from Lafayette to attend a meeting, because he works from home. And so one of the things that I think we have the ability to do, when we talk about brings the business and brings the business and brings the jobs, is to get some more of that ability for people to be able to work from home, when they can get better connectivity to internet. Right now, the number one thing that we hear out in the community is the difficulty to be able to provide adequate internet services, not just to the residents, but those people who are, may have a rural business. And a rural business could be, you know, something as, what Mike has to, you know, there are folks that do a lot of online sales from home and have those types of businesses. And so we can provide better efficiency for them to continue operating from that platform outside and be independent and produce and provide an avenue for more entrepreneurs in this community, that provide broadband to those neighborhoods. So essentially, their quest, again, is for ten million dollars of investment that they're looking to make here. They intend to hire about four to six individuals for this. One of the things that I did ask Nick is how many they currently hire or employ from Wells County, and they have six employees that work for Hartland that are already employed that live in Wells County, so they do employ people already from over here. And there's a possibility that they could hire more through this. The other thing, through the process of about four years' worth of construction to dig, or to get all the lines funded, they intend to hire local folks to be able to do all that contract work as well. So we're requesting a ten-year tax abatement. You'll see on the tax abatement schedule that we did adjust from the original request and going to four years at a hundred percent, and then going down from there, five, from years five through ten, scale down from sixty percent down. The reason for that is because of the, essentially, it's, they have about a three- to four-year build time, and that essentially gets at least a hundred percent of the bill to receive a hundred percent of the tax payment. Now, what it does do essentially is those, the amount of equipment that's placed in year three and year four, will only get a six-year or a seven-year tax abatement instead of a ten-year tax payment that they would normally get if they put a call-in service on, on day one. So they're, they intend to only file for ten years.
Okay, so I understand that's right, that anything that's put in prior to the four years is going to get six years, is what you're saying, instead of the ten year?
So if they do two million dollars in year one, that two million will get the full ten years. If they do, and if they put in two million or three mil, let's say it'd be three million a year over four years, that's, you know, pretty close to that, a little bit over, obviously, the ten million mark, but they would, so the year four investment, that nearly two to three million dollars that they would do in year four, essentially only gets a six-year tax abatement.
Going back to the ten million, is that, just refresh my memory, is that for just Wells County alone?
It's just Wells.
Okay, not Huntington, Wabash, just Wells County? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Huntington, Wabash, do you?
The total project is?
Well, we've got, we've got larger coverage areas than those two.
The total project was, is marked for around fifty-one and a half million dollars, is what we're looking at. It seems like Wabash actually had a higher amount, but I don't, I don't know for sure.
The book Huntington and Wabash are higher abatement amounts than what we, so it's not, that was one of my things I was seeing about afterwards, is the number of people that we're serving versus Huntington and Wabash are very different. And if it's ten million for each of the three, that wasn't going to make a whole lot of sense, so you are saying that like, kind of, which is bigger would be a lot more of an abatement, and then Wabash, whatever the demographics are there, would maybe be more as well?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so it's like, just straight across, so that's fine.
Nick, what, what numbers are you up to on your online sign-up for Wells?
I just sat down.
Just rough.
I think we're like two hundred and sixty, I mean, right now, and we've not, we're not pushing everything real hard. The reason is, is we're not ready to hit, and the last thing we want to do is really start pushing real hard at the beginning, and then have the membership and citizens asking, when are you going to, when are you going to come out here? Until, until we physically have boots on the ground, and we're going to have boots on the ground probably by the end of the month. I don't want to overpromise. We're looking at...
So you are reading the forward quickly?
Oh, yes, yes. We have a...
A year, two years.
Yeah.
And you're still, and you're referring to Wells County, when you said boots on the ground?
Yes, correct. Well, yes, correct. It's a whole project, I mean, you've got to understand, I mean, I hope you understand, we cover such a large area, we don't always look at it exactly by the county line, because, you know, we may have a substation in Wells County that serves part of Huntington and so forth and so, but yes, to answer your question, yes, we're, we're ready to get started, and we've ordered miles and miles of fiber. To give you an idea, just for your information, in Wells County alone, we're estimating about seven hundred and fifty miles of fiber optic line. That's not individual fibers, that's total linear feed of fiber optic cable within the county, so that's substantial.
I'd just like to say, I was approached by one of the I T specialists from Orwell School, and he was not begging me, but strongly recommending that I pass this.
I've had a lot of people out contacting about, about as well, especially when a few realtors even that said, you know, if you wanted to grow that area, you're going to have to be, because that's another one thing people are asking for now, is high-speed internet.
Absolutely.
I truly have my reservations over this much money for so few, few employees, but in this case...
That's my struggle, is the traditional value.
I find so much value in what they're doing.
I think this, as I've kind of, you know, explained to you, this is one of the little bit of different, you know, in regards to the employees, this is one of those building names, you know, that, like I said, you know, you hope you build it, and so that it entices more people to come and move here, and the more people who move here, and then those income taxes come to support, and the property taxes come to support. And one of the things fiber has been, is certainly known to do, is increase property values. Increase property values, increase assessments, increase tax revenues, and so forth.
Well, my thought is that Warren's already doing it, and they didn't ask for an abatement, so Warren's going to already have this, that we're looking to abate in this case, so I guess I have a problem with wanting to do it myself.
I mean, I also look back...
Doesn't generate jobs, it's not a job creator, it's a construction project, but you're asking the county to help subsidize a project that not everyone will benefit from. I mean, that's, you could say that, yes, they could, but if you already have Warren phone service, no, it doesn't. So it's just a, I guess, again, the whole premise of tax abatement is to bring jobs, permanent, high-paid jobs. The speculation of home businesses and all that, we have zoning to prevent that to a certain extent, so I guess I'm, I'm a little troubled with the notion of it, to be honest. That's just me.
And I agree, Mike. When you, when you look at also, not bring up touch the situation, but the wind farm projects, that had economic, it didn't have, they had the abatements, but there was economic development payments to the taxing units that was being pushed forward. There was a monetary value, whether the backside of it or up on the front side of it, and this doesn't, it's just strictly a...
I mean, I mean, the county has to operate with funds. If we give away every great idea that comes to the county, that while it'll make us, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a philosophy that, yes, build it and it will come, but the challenge is, we still have to fund a government to operate on, and those are all important things to make people want to move here too. Law enforcement, roads, bridges, these are all things that we have to tax something to pay for that. And that's one of the notions that tax abatements would set outside, and that's problematic in the, in the sense of where we have to operate our government from. So if everyone got an abatement, there would be no money to get, so.
Well, that's true, but not true, because if these guys are, do not do this, you receive no tax money from what they're doing either.
I was at their meeting, they're going to do it. They voted to approve to do fiber optics.
That's fine, but if they didn't do it, you would receive zero dollars from day one or date, or year ten, so.
Which, that would be true of any business that would come to town. Any business could choose to ask for an abatement or not.
If they can.
Now, now, the other thing to think about, if this was to go forward, I guarantee there's going to be more in the pipeline ready to also do this, is they go forward with whatever technology things that they're going to do, so, you know, so far, they've paid their taxes, the ones that have already done it and have gone forward, whether it's fiber or whatnot, but obviously, there'll be more coming through, and I'm assuming, just to help my, like, A E P, Buckeye, Panhandle, on the other sides of it, in our, in our information here, it's more towards Roy, from the legal standpoint, does that also allow them to look for electric power, things of that nature? I know we talk about technology, but where does that line get drawn between new technology and existing?
Because wouldn't the solar farm kind of have the same notion, that, well, they're going to bring electricity, and that's valuable too, in a sense?
Well, the solar farm would actually provide, would actually, if you were to do a solar farm, there would be actual taxing personal property, the actual things that collect the sunlight, full energy is taxable personal property, which you could do. So the I C code specifically defines what new information technology is tangible personal property that, under section B, consists of equipment including software used in the fields of information processing, office automation, tech, or telecommunication facilities, informatics, network administration, software development, and fiber optics. So telecom doing it for a, essentially for just phone service, that would not qualify. And A T and T certainly could come here if they intend to do fiber optics or are going to build a telecommunications facility, they could certainly come to you and make a request for you to evaluate whether or not you want to approve that.
So other utilities would fall into that gray area of what they would call new technology, but that's, that's the thing I'm saying here, I think, okay, we're, let's go.
Yeah, no, it was...
As we go forward here, obviously.
The abatement is not, you're not giving them tax money that you're collecting that. You're forestalling collecting tax on new value that they're adding to the community.
Absolutely.
But when that depreciates out, though, as it collects it, then there won't be as much value to it at the end of the ten years, though?
There's always a...
I mean, depends what, how, how they appreciate it out.
Yeah, they tend to depreciate over twenty years, and again, personal property still hits a thirty percent floor, so it will always collect at a thirty percent. floor. So it will always collect at a thirty percent valuation of the product, but once it's been depreciated.
Sometimes in the service, we're not necessarily creating jobs or manufacturing goods, but we're providing service. I mean, now, grandkids are I think the kids are from grandkids are e-learning days, you know, or people needing to drive to the library where they've got internet access. They can do that. And I think that adds something. I think of not too far, there's a Indiana Valley used to have a big telephone plant, you know, there were probably in the sixties, switchboard operators and this and that. I don't have people like that anymore, but how many want to give up your phone or cellphone towers? Hopefully, the stuff works and you don't need hundreds of people doing it. But certainly, they provide value to the community and to the residents of the county.
Nick, how many competitors do you have in the fiber optic business right now?
I've got a few. I mean, obviously, you've spoken Citizens Telephone, Average Wells, or Craigville. I'm not sure if they're going by now, but I mean, those are two big ones. To be completely full disclosure, we talked to both of them about partnering in this project to go clear across the four counties that we serve. And they they're just not sized to do that. And we've got good relationships within the Aladdin County citizens. You know, I hope that when we get all this going, that we can we can partner with them in some way and share fiber and do things together. Sure, you've got the MediaComs and the FiOS and the Fresh Years and the Comcast of the world, but our service is top notch. And I guess we're not concerned about competing with some guys. I mean.
Are you going to have a price advantage because your tax your benefits different than theirs?
I think that I wouldn't call it a tax or a tax advantage, but a price advantage. You know, we're we've already disclosed our prices. I think they're competitive with what they are. You know, we're not requiring a long-term commitment, which is one thing that a lot of them do, you know, they'll kind of dish network direct TV does it to us all the time, right? I mean, if you sign up and you can get it for twenty nine ninety five for the first two years and then it's a hundred twenty two years down the road. So, but yeah, we're not doing that. It's if anything, it'll probably go down. It's what some of the some of the discussions, internal discussions we've had at over time as we get more members brought on. Because again, we're not in this for profit. We're in this to better the community and all the communities that we serve. We're not we're not we're not trying to make a profit. We're just like our electric business. It's a it's a nonprofit electric business. So.
Am I right? This is not with the fiber optics here, it's not a territory. So you a competitor could run right next to you. So there's no competition of a this is your particular area monopoly of your area or anything. It's a if somebody's unhappy with or I mean, if the people want something different, they can hopefully if they've come down, they can do it. So.
Somebody wants to come and make the investment.
Where your electric is. So you're it's totally different than the electric side because electric, that's your territory and that's what you it's regulated. So.
Well, I live in the Warren district. I'll throw my two cents towards that. My internet is there sometimes and sometimes it's not. It's kind of angry, but, you know, I think a little competitive might improve what's out there, you know. So and the realtor thing was brought up. And that was I'm a realtor now retired. But hey, the first thing that comes out of the pocket when we would show a house is they would check see what kind of service they had and how much that tower wound up, you know. That was, you know, or they were kind of interested in the house right off the bat. It's a different it's a different than what it was ten years ago.
You're on the flip side, Mike, right now. With Union, we have MediaComs. We have no competition. And if you know what they're charging us right now, I'm excited about maybe having some competition. I mean, so it can go both ways.
Sure, not there.
Now, if you Nick, if you don't have polls or if you're not servicing an area right now, are you still I look at your map entirely. Are you still looking to go into those areas if you don't have electric service at this stage?
Through that, through our website, through that outside venue that we're using. If we have an area that we can show interest, for instance, Hartland is really internet.
I mean, I'm thinking Uniondale. I don't know if Uniondale is it RMC or is it AEP? I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
I think you handle all of the Uniondale.
We handle.
The whole I'm just using as a hypothetical as an example.
Uniondale, but I think on the map.
We carry the outside. But if there's enough interest, what I'm getting at is there's enough interest and we will extend into that in and out community. And that goes all across the all the counties.
You're not stuck like you are from electrical.
Yeah, because like Austin's AEP, I mean, use Austin as a prime example. You to go into Austin, which obviously there's other competitors there already.
We make a business case.
Yeah, you but you you are considering. Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Vicki, any thoughts on?
I mean, I have Sitsnet, so I'm good because we've always had pretty good service. We we have a little upgraded system, so.
Like I said, this is a difference. This is a unique situation. Yeah, this is something we've never.
Honestly, if I could have had RMC as my electric company, who was just right to my north, I would have loved that. And I I know people just south of us and they don't have very good internet service. So I'm thinking of them more than any situation with me. But I do know that they've had problems even getting some type of internet service in there. So I don't know.
But like I said, we're more, you know, that I guess the the idea of doing a, you know, an abatement to something like this is where that's where it's just, like I said, I've been kind of I've really we've had plenty of time to think about this since, what, September, you know, August, when I was talking about this. And it just kind of one minute, I mean, I understand where we're at here in the next minute. I just have to be convinced more, I guess, of what if what path are we going down, I guess, down the future at least?
I can tell you, just from the conversations that are taking place in northeast Indiana and the conversations that now Hartland RMC is getting involved and the RMCs throughout northeast Indiana are wanting to learn how do we do it? Because our because World Broadband is an is an investment, a significant investment for not a lot of customers. I mean, if it was that easy to do, everybody would be doing it. And so we have a company that's willing to make an investment into a significant investment to provide a service that is in dire need that any community and a lot of a lot of counties would love to have. And counties are fighting for somebody just to come in and make this investment happen. We have somebody here that's willing to do it. And I think that it's we don't just have somebody. We have a very reputable company within our community that's already providing a very solid service and power. And I think that they've obviously made a name for themselves. And I think they're going to continue to do that with this product.
I think the hard thing is that nobody knows what the future is. And I think that's where Mike's at. You know, what's going to happen when this one wants well, you did this abatement for them.
That's where.
Aren't we a similar type of entity and?
Well, I can tell you that Watch Communications are in contact with me and they're building a plan for the other half of the county. And they are likely going to be coming and asking for the same thing. Are they the right one? Maybe. They're the only one, again.
I just know in the past, we've had abatements based on jobs and payroll and what it generates in income taxes and alternatives income. And I don't know what that even is as far as a real number. So we're not, you know, if he put in an oven over pretzels and said, I'll hire ten more guys, or if Haven put in three more lathes and hired ten more guys, there's, you know, I was curious, you know, Allen County uses a little bit of a structured abatement program as I and you wouldn't technically even be eligible to ask in Allen County based on their structured abatement program, would they? Because they have it structured.
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, I thought it was a little more structured. It had to generate X number of dollars and some alternative income to the county when they give. So.
Some do, some don't. You know, we've had some conversations even in our Economic Development Council about putting some structure to tax abatements and but yet not having it in writing so that you all have the leeway to provide whatever you feel is appropriate. If you put it in writing, then you got to follow the rules. And sometimes you don't always want to follow the rules. And you want to provide what.
Well, if we make the rules, we get to change the rules. Things don't know what happens. But the trick is that if there's no rules, anyone can go. I mean, you know, you can have every farmer ask for an abatement at some point.
And so far, that's not happened because they didn't change or they didn't create the payroll. There wasn't, you know, the income tax.
Well, no, because they also don't have they wouldn't fall under the.
But I'm saying I'm just saying as a whole, traditionally, it was a business that would supply salary with employees and like Mike's saying.
And I would say today that a lot of the communities are looking at tax payment a little bit differently, given today's job market. They're looking at investment over looking jobs, especially, you know, they're looking at four to six people. All four to six people could be Wells County residents. None of them could be residents quite as many.
Yeah, we don't.
Pretzels could say, we're going to hire ten people, and none of them could be Wells County residents. We hope that at least a percentage of them are, and we think that there's a possibility that they could be. But we don't know because people are traveling more and more to work. And the city of Lufton just did a tax abatement with zero job increase for them. But again, it was seventy five million dollars. Pretty significant investment for this community and for this county.
And we've been very lenient in times of of economic downturns where we can we remain, you know, retain jobs. And it's been done that way, too. I totally understand. Exceptions have been made to what normally we're looking at.
Which is again, why I don't want to have written rules to specifics because the economy changes and we specifically say jobs. And right now, like I said, the company says we'd love to increase the jobs, but we're struggling to increase, you know, our workforce now because we don't want to. We just can't.
Here again, I would like to bring up, Nick says he's got two hundred and eighty-five people requesting, bring this in. I have people coming to me, asking me, bring this in. We don't have that when pretzels needs an oven or Haven needs a drill press. I mean, I just look at this as totally different.
Yeah, it's unique.
One thing, if I can add, we have identified thirty five hundred, what we call demand points within Wells County. That might be a home, it might be a business, it might be one of our substations, it might be a cell tower, it could be anything. But there's thirty five hundred demand points just in Wells County, give or take. And I think some of what I think, if I may, might be getting lost here is, you know, Purdue did a study and said that World Broadband was going to bring twelve could bring twelve billion dollars to the state. It was a four to one return. So for every four dollars spent, I'm sorry, every dollar spent on Broadband was a four dollar return. And I think you're right, we're not going to just open the floodgates and bring all these hire all these people from from Wells County. Like we just, you know, maybe during the construction process, we'll hire a larger percentage. But what's being lost here, I think, is the fact that you're not you're not going to lose. I think you're going to have people that stay in your community because they they can't stay here and telecommute. That's the that's the thing now is telecommuting, you know, to to where they can they can sign in. Your doctors, you know, your your teachers, your social I mean, we see that all the time, where people are driving a couple hours to go to Indian, and they could work from home if they have good internet service or figure city. I think that's something there that I can't tell you how many. I don't know. But Purdue says it's it's huge for the state. That study, I think, was done in August of eighteen. But that's just something to consider.
I just think that how my experience has changed in forty-four years that I've been an attorney to now, where I can get on the GIS and I can see what taxes were paid there and I can I can go to the county's page and I can look up the minutes of your last meeting. I can look up the ordinances, the county court of ordinances there. I can go on Facebook to see what the sheriff is publishing. And he's got a lot of communication, a lot of availability there. I can see the GIS directed line, the drone over Hoosier Highway and the curve and just didn't have that two or three years ago. So I think I know your channel to think about how many jobs. I mean, we're not building a factory and employing people, but we're bringing in a service for an area that can. So I think that's part of our country today. We've got more things made in China, but we're more of a service market than we are manufacturing in many in many respects. And I think it might be reflective of that trend, you know. Lose your phone and see how you.
Yeah.
Actually.
I think just on perspective, I went and met with Chad and I was kind of on riding the fence a little bit, like I'm not sure if I want to do this abatement. However, one thing that he said that really and it's away from the broadband. It doesn't matter what your business is right now, as long as you follow these rules of what we can do tax abatements for. The other part of it is, I know we're doing a hundred percent, you know, what he's asking is a hundred percent for four years of tax abatement. However, this is something we don't have now, but eventually it will be a a good amount of money coming into Wells County. And I think we that's kind of what our job is, is to make sure we have money coming into the county. And I think that that's 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 kind of a little bit more of where I was going when Chad talked to me and explained that a little bit better.
We're representing the taxing the other taxing units of incorporated through this county.
Right.
Which is why I still ask the question, were you going to do the project, whether you got the abatement or not?
You know, I suppose that we have the actual answer for that because, you know, what we know is that their board approved for them to move forward on the project and then asked them to go out and seek incentives. What the board could certainly do with Wells County is either say, well, if we didn't get incentives there, we're going to go there last, or we're going to try again for incentives. And if we don't get it then, then we'll reevaluate. You know, the board essentially gave them approvals to move forward on the project, just as any company would get approval to make a purchase. And then generally, the next call is to me. That's that's all we know. You know, without the entire board sitting here, we don't know what they're thinking in regards to what they really move forward if they didn't receive it here.
I think any investor is going to think, well, is that going to break it or not? But at least is it a factor that would help me motivate in the making of investment? I might still do it. I mean, might be more likely to make the investment if I know that I've got that as one factor.
I think we all know that if we're not growing, we're we're going backwards as a as a community. This is one way that we can show that we are open for growth, we're open for business. There's a lot of people and entities in this county that are pro-growth. I'd be one of them. And I would be all for making this happen. And also, it tells the next person, whatever, what's that other friend you said?
Watch piece.
That we're open for business here in Wells County. We want to be friendly and open for economic development and so on. Very pro making sure we are open for business here in this county.
Miles?
Do we need a number attached to the resolution?
Yeah.
You need to actually because the number refers to the resolution that you just passed.
Yeah, and that would be that the resolution two thousand and nineteen dash eleven.
Eleven is the.
Yeah. And that's what you would have received if you if you have your copies from electronic. That actually has the name Hartland RMC or Hartland RMC on it. So it's the so you don't get them confused with, yeah, and this one, we have not had a motion if we want to go move forward to approve this. So this would have to be done first and then the SB one.
You guys approved the RA after the.
But this is a this has your name. This is a yeah, the other the first one was the blanket one for the for the for the county.
Yeah, we approved that.
We approved that. That's what we just did with the with the.
They have one one paper for the RA. You should have only had one.
Well, no, we moved forward for the public hearing. That's what we had that public hearing for.
You did that in two steps. You did a preliminary determination.
Yeah.
And tonight you passed another resolution making reaffirming that and making that a final.
Exactly, exactly. The first one that we talked about moving into public hearings. So now we're we have to make a motion here.
Yes.
For this being Hartland. The R A, we were confirming.
The one you did tonight was 11.
Yes, that's 11.
This is 11 here.
So the next one you would do would be 12. So I think, so 09 was what you approved.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this, yeah, because there's another, the S B, it's on our, I'm sure right here. Yeah, you got Economic Revitalization Area, which is this one, 11, right? Then.
Nine was the point.
Nine is the public hearing one. Now we're ready to, to look at the Hartland R E M C.
The one that should say resolution setting forth final action is. The preliminary one was nine and then you passed it again to make it.
Well, I'm just going by this number here, yeah.
Yeah.
11, yeah, 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 we're right.
But this, but this is, this is, this one now.
Yeah, that's 12, yeah, that's the, I, I just call this the abatement, it's got the abatement on it.
Yeah, okay.
This one doesn't, that's why I'm, yeah, because we got 11 and then 12, so.
And you should have probably have passed 11 after your public hearing.
We didn't, no, yeah. Now I'm getting re-urulated.
11 should have been what you actually approved at, at the completion of your public hearing.
They did.
Okay, yeah. But I, but I think.
We did 09.
It said 09.
9, it's 9. See, we're no key to us.
Yeah.
This is, this is what I understand, right here, this is the one we passed to move for public hearing. It says notice of adoption or resolution designated Economic Revitalization Area for the county. There was no names of any particular companies or anything on it.
That's the notice, that's not.
That's the public notice.
Public notice.
Here's, here's your 09 resolution. Passed and recorded.
Yeah, that's the one, okay.
They should all have.
Yeah, that's the one, that's what we did here, right?
That's the 09 part.
09 part.
Yeah.
So we did that.
So 11 shows that you passed it again because it refers to the 09 somewhere, I thought.
Yeah, right here, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the box, okay. You're, you're messing those here.
Sorry.
No, 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 this is where it goes to the 09, so.
Okay.
With this being 2019 11, we've already agreed to this. This is confusing because it, yeah.
That's what, you should have passed it after the public hearing.
Okay. Everybody clear on this now?
But his motion was for the 9.
9, so we actually need to make a motion for this.
So in the minutes, the 9.
In our minutes to confirm this.
We need to make a motion back, going back to the 11.
So right now.
Sorry.
There would have to be a motion for.
For 11.
For this ordinance, the 11 now, because 9 is what was, a motion was made, which.
The 11 is for the county's wide.
Yeah.
So 9 was, 9 was what you passed last month to take it to.
To move it forward.
I need to amend my motion.
Yeah, we need to amend.
Your motion for 11.
11.
For resolution 2019.
You hadn't already gone ahead and passed it, but no, you didn't, so that's what you do now.
Yes.
So I made my motion to say 2019 dash 11.
11.
And I don't know if you seconded it.
I did.
At the second one, we're good on the second? So everybody's good with their vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good. So now we're looking at number 12, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And that's this one here that has the abatement on the back, on the back page, on the final page.
Should there be discussion on the, on the breakdown of the, of the years or no? Or it's, leave it at this?
I mean, we can't, we have to have that discussion.
I mean, they, they're the ones that proposed it, we should at least.
And it's showing year one, year two, year three, year four is 100% exempt, then starting in year five, it goes to 60% and the breakdown goes to year 10 at 10%.
The original schedule said what, Chad?
The original schedule was five years at 100% and then going to 50% in year six, but we moved it to four years because of that would be essentially what they're indicating as their build time and that is what Huntington County did.
Any questions?
Which is why we backed it down a year and they did the same.
What's one year difference from what we're looking at? So does anybody have any questions in regards to the percentages of the 10-year breakdown?
I don't know, in historical abatements, have we done changes on that on a regular basis, Jim? I mean, you've been here a long time, so.
Well, most of used to be all 10.
10-year.
They always, yeah, 10% per year.
We have done some fives.
The last year we did for Haven was three years at 100%.
But this is a new, this is a new trend of changing these years almost on a case by case is what I'm getting to.
Correct.
In fact, that's what your resolution did.
Right.
Setting a schedule that some communities have, some cities and counties have deliberately.
Might be realized that we can't.
Well, and I, and I probably, when we did talk about it briefly earlier was the fact that it's not like a piece of equipment that gets 100% all placed in service day one.
Right, correct.
It's going to be, it's going to four years to build it out.
Because of the construction.
Each year it'll 100% was fully gone rather than running in three years. Is that the right statement?
That's, that's why we did that, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we, that's why we looked at this at 100% for multiple years and you're looking at it uniquely. You know, and my, my, my goal, as I've kind of been researching tax abatements in the community and throughout the county is, my goal is to reduce the number of tax abatements we have based on investment, based on jobs, based on some of those things and actually starting to fill out an application and going through a checkbox and administering points so that then we can bring this to you guys to say, here's why we came up with this and we're looking at, we're doing a upfront capital, you know, tax abatement, like I said, three years at 100% instead of stretching it all the way out to 10 years because years, a lot of times years eight, nine, 10, the benefit is so small that it actually costs them more money to file than it does to, than they're actually getting a benefit. And so, you know, trying to look at doing some upfront and supplementing the capital investment upfront versus.
Sure.
Spreading it out for 10 years, so trying to look at them more on a case by case basis.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? Yes, if not, do we have a motion to approve Wells County Council Resolution Number 2019 dash 12?
I'll make the motion to approve Wells County Resolution Number 2019 dash 12.
We have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by raising your hand. opposed, motion carries. You sold us on it, guys. You sold us on it.
Would you attach those also?
All right, so we're good there, we got a bunch of, don't forget, we got a bunch of signs.
Resolution subject, I didn't know if you had the S B one attached.
My apologies, Roy, I thought we, my numbers were, I thought we had to go back.
We were looking at this.
Yeah, I was the one that brought it up because I thought we had to go back and confirm what we did, so, and keep the number the same.
I thought you did after you asked for comments, maybe I was wrong, did you, did you pass it?
Well, we did pass it, but, but I, I think it was stated that it was 09.
Because that's, that was the resolution for the hearing, to go to the hearing, so we thought it was all be the same number, so it'd be the same, so that's why there's confusion. We're good. No, no, no problem, no problem, we're good.
We wanted to break it up so you could make one decision as to whether or not.
Because we knew we had to pass that one to get to the next one, that's what, yeah, so we're going in numerical order. No problem, thanks, Roy. All right. Okay, now we're here to the 2000, definitely not here.
Oops, sorry.
2020 budget adoption. At this stage, we'll do each one because we have an ordinance for each one of these, which the first one would be the Wells County budget, which, as we've gone through, everything's still good, everything's.
The number's still held up.
Right, right.
Causes territory, that's what.
And we had to add a little bit for, for survey, that's what.
That's right.
Everything else has stayed the same, so. Okay, we're going to make sure we got the numbers right and I'll get to the next step. Okay, first one we're doing is Wells County adoption, which would be 2019 dash.
14.
14. Any further questions or concerns over our Wells County general budget? If not, everybody knows, we've seen it, everything's involved, participated. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance resolution number 2019 dash 14 for the Wells County budget?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, motion carries. All right, that is that one. Then we have the solid waste, Wells County solid waste ordinance, which would be number 2019 dash 15. Okay. Any, again, any questions or concerns over that budget? If not, do we have a motion to approve ordinance number 2019 dash 15 for solid waste? Is there a motion?
Just a second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, motion carries there. Now the last one would be the Rock Creek Conservancy, which would be ordinance resolution number 2019 dash 16. Any questions or concerns there? Motion to approve, we have a motion to approve 2019. We have a second?
Second.
Vicki's got it. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion again, or opposed, motion carries there. All right, those are all completed. And again, I'd like to thank everybody, I think everybody, it was a good budget and it went real timely and everything was very good. Appreciate, appreciate all that.
Yep, commend you on getting it done.
Hey, you guys have done the job, you guys did the job, you guys did the job, so. All right, Ms. Lanis, this is.
We have updated ordinance, last year when we passed the sheriff's matrix, all Wells County employees, their first year of service are, are $500, $500 and the rest. So with the matrix, we didn't include them in that.
So they'll be waived from that.
So we added the jail to this. So that's ordinance number 2019 17.
Any questions or concerns over ordinance 2019 dash 17? If not, do we have a motion to approve 2019 dash 17?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion? We have a second? We have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, motion carries there. That's easy. Well, that's it?
Sorry.
Oh, okay. All right, anything else for the goodie order?
I'm going to just mention that I went to the A I C meeting last week with him. And it's, it's just funny how other counties don't get along and don't do things quite as similarly as we do, so, you know, I appreciate myself, and I think we all do, working with such a, you know, a good group of county employees and county workers to, that, you know, there's always horror stories out there, but I appreciate that.
And I'll segue off of that and say I think congratulations in order for our auditor and our former auditor for a clean federal and a clean state audit. And I do believe they both won awards down at A I C.
That's right.
We got education.
Educational certificate.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Circle's worth it.
And a pin.
Oh, yeah.
And I got a bruise.
Good deal.
No, we all don't.
That's right.
Anything else? If not, do we have a motion for adjournment? Seconds? All in favor signify by raising your hand. We are adjourned. All right.